Meeting to order, please. This is the May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Columbia County Planning Commission meeting. First, I'd like to start out with the invocation by Dylan Douglas and then the pledge led by Jim Steed. Please stand. Pray that you would guide our leaders present. I also first say. Okay, we have a full quorum tonight, and at first, I'd like to recognize Jamie Lester, District One appointee. Welcome, Jamie. Approval of minutes from the previous meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the May first meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. I need approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five agenda and add the preliminary and final plat for County Club.
I'll second that motion. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Have the patient to read. Do I need to read? I need to read the present?
Sit on the back of everything. I mean, we could probably wing it real quick.
Yeah.
I don't know if I could do that.
I mean, one of us could do it. I mean, I could wing it.
Well, we're Columbia County Planning Commission's recommending body, I think, to the commissioners of Columbia County. How does it go next?
Items discussed that are public hearings for this body will be considered as a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. That meeting, the items for public hearings will be held on June third of two thousand and twenty-five here in this space at six o'clock.
And if you'd like to speak, you have a right to speak. See Ms. Styler for a request to speak form, and she will set you up. You will have how many minutes? Ten minutes? Ten minutes?
Per side.
Per side. They cede your time, and I can't remember the rest.
So just to clarify, the request to speak form is for Board of Commissioners, not for this meeting?
Yes. Uh, that's that. Sorry about that.
Try it out on this first item. Get to try it out on this first item tonight.
Okay, so unfinished business. We have the H one A R Z twenty-five dash oh-two-oh-one. Danielle?
Yes, sir. This is a request for a rezoning from R two, single-family residential to PRD, Planned Residential Development. We have seen this request twice before. It was most recently postponed from the March twentieth meeting to allow the applicants more time to sort out some of the kind of technical details as far as how they're going to construct this project. This site is located on kind of the southwest side of Washington Road, across from Mullins Crossing, and is currently zoned R two, single-family residential. Immunity properties to kind of the west are primarily single-family residential as well. To the north, you have an existing apartment complex, and to the south, you have Washington Commons, which is a senior living facility. It's essentially an apartment complex as well. Now, this shows the aerial of the site. There is one existing house on the property with the remainder of the site undeveloped. And here is a site photo. And the original concept plan had a hundred and twenty-three units on it. It is a mix of attached and detached cottages. There were some concerns with this as far as how they were getting access to the site and from our fire marshal and fire department as to how they were going to meet fire code requirements with this layout. So we did receive an updated layout on May second. This does reduce the unit count and kind of spaces things out a little more, so we are down to a hundred and four units with this plan. It keeps the same kind of concept. It's a mix of attached and detached cottages arranged around these kind of common green space areas. They have also provided the fire truck access plan that shows that the fire truck can make all of the turns within the development, so they have adequate fire access. This has been reviewed by the fire department. They did have some initial concerns about what the specific details of the truck used were. The engineer has since verified that the details they've used do exceed the requirements for Columbia County, so that does address those concerns. The only access to the site is intended to be from Washington Road. That will require a DOT permit before they can get approval for construction plans, but that is a access off of a major public road, so there's no particular concerns with that from the staff standpoint. DOT will just have to review that driveway location. Here's some of the renderings, so just some examples of what they're looking to build as far as the cottage units and their arrangement around these kind of central green spaces. And in terms of the future development map, this property is in the neighborhood's character area on the future land use map. Typically, that area would be for a single-family residential primarily. This is also on the edge of the Evans Activity Center, which is a mixed-use activity center, and that's where we would typically see higher-density residential development like this. With this property's location between essentially two existing apartment complexes, we think it does make sense to expand the activity center to include this parcel and allow that density in this location. So staff is recommending approval with the conditions that the project must be connected to county sewer and that the architectural requirements of Evans Town Center shall apply to this property.
Okay, thank you. Were the owner applicant, T L Gray Enterprises, L L L P, or Brightside Homes, would like to come forward and speak? Favor? Speak your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Sean Smith with Cranston Engineering, four fifty-two Ellis Street, Augusta, Georgia. I'm here to represent the developer right now. And also to answer any questions you may.
Do you have any questions?
I kind of have one. Do you, I know you've reduced it down to one oh-four units, right, from one twenty-three, so you've kind of lessened the density of it. Are you going to have anybody there or leasing office on site or anything like that, or is there just going to be? No. So you're renting all these units, right?
Right, that's correct. So over in the community pool area, there is an office building, a pool, and then where the blank area is, or where the text is, open space, if there's sort of bocce ball or pickleball court, they plan that as well. I don't know what the usage is for that office building, but I would assume it would be for leasing. But yeah, the intention is renting all these units.
What is going to be the average cost of rent for these units? I know they're varying size, but you know, this market rate?
David, David Hogg, he's the real estate agent for the developer.
Okay. More questions? All right, thank you. Anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak in favor? Anyone in the audience would like to speak against this? Have a motion?
I make a motion. We recommend approval with conditions of file R Z twenty-five oh-one, request to rezone the properties at forty-two oh-four Washington Road, R two to PRD.
I'll second. Have a motion and duly second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Four, one against? Four, one. Okay, item. New business, preliminary plat, Kioki Creek Club, two A. That is Will.
Lieutenant Chair, this is a request for a preliminary plat for Kioki Creek Country Club. Well, kind of the backstory on this, kind of explain kind of what we're doing here. This development has no public infrastructure whatsoever. The road is private. Water is going to be done through wells, and so it's going to be on septic, so there's nothing the county is taking in this regards. Usually you have roads and sewer and all that kind of stuff that we're taking. So again, nothing that we're actually going to be, is going to be deeded to us on this. So we kind of took, or the developer wanted to kind of explore different ways to go about doing a development. The one thing that he has done is there is a requirement to bond your road, no matter, kind of no matter what. If you wanted basically not build it before, or build it before your final plat is approved, that bond has been approved by, or has been accepted by VOC. So again, we're going to be seeing a preliminary plat and a final plat at the same meeting, and that does not happen. This is the only, probably the only time this will ever happen, but again, there is the ability to do that within our code. What we're dealing with is located off Burke's Mountain Road and Smith Oaks Drive, about two hundred and ninety-three acres. Currently zoned RA, looking to do about thirteen lots on the, on the property. This is location, again, off of Smith Oaks. They will be using Burke's Mountain to access for construction only. And again, currently zoned RA, residential agricultural. And this shows up the preliminary plat. There is one thing that's kind of still in process. The permit to cross that creek has not been approved yet by the Corps of Engineers. That's why, or one of the reasons why we have a recommendation to approve it contingent upon staff's recommendation, or approval, excuse me. So it's still going through some review process, is what I'm getting at. Now, the developer, he will be able to build basically this section here and then this section all the way through there, including this piece that didn't get covered, but will not be able to actually cross that creek until that permit is approved. Again, thirteen lots. They all meet RA requirements by quite a bit, and staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat, contingent upon staff approval.
Thank you, Will. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Kioki Creek Country Club pending staff approvals and recommendations.
I'll second. Have a motion and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Will, final plat.
Yep, this is the final plat. Again, we won't really dive into it. This is the actual plat itself. Again, we know where it's at now. We know how it's, we know where it's at, we know how it's zoned. So again, the final plat is on two different pages here, exact same as the preliminary. Staff recommends approval, contingent upon staff approval.
Very good. I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Kioki Creek Country Club pending staff approval and recommendations.
Second. Motion and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Public hearing part of the meeting, H two C one, provisional home occupation. Danielle?
Yes, sir. This is a request for a provisional home occupation for the Potter's Cabinet at fourteen-twenty Freeman Harris Road. Property is located on the west side of Freeman Harris off Wrightsboro Road. The applicant is intending to use an existing detached garage on the property to make pottery that she would then take to vendor shows to sell, and so there would be no customer traffic to the site, which should limit any impacts to the neighbors. All of the business activity as far as making the pottery would take place inside the detached garage. That does meet the square footage requirements for provisional home occupation, being less than fifty percent of the square footage of the house. Since everything would take place inside and there's no customer traffic to the site, there's no particular concerns with the operation of this business, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Danielle. Owners Daniel or Christina DeZutter, or applicant Christina DeZutter, would like to come forward and speak in favor?
Christina DeZutter, I'm the Potter's Cabinet. I literally only intend to play in mud in my bed and hope somebody likes the end result. You guys have any questions?
I have no questions. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak against? Do I have a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the provisional home occupation for the Potter's Cabinet at fourteen-twenty Freeman Harris Road.
Second. I have a motion and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Temporary use authorization, seventy-five sixty-one Lakeside Drive, H two A two. Will?
Lieutenant Chair, this is a request for temporary use authorization at seventy-five sixty-one Lakeside Drive. Currently zoned R four, looking to have a temporary use for the existing mobile home on the property. Location of the property, again, off Lakeside Drive up near the lake. And the location kind of further out, showing as part of Greater Winfield Hills subdivision. Current zoning is R four. So they're looking to build a new house on the property, basically behind the trailer, about a forty-one by thirty building. They want to keep the trailer on site while they build the house itself and then remove the trailer once they're done with the house. Really no concerns from our standpoint, and staff recommends approval.
Okay, the owners or applicant Stacy or Brenda Slater, Wesley U M C, would like to come forward and speak?
I'm Mike Fleming with Wesley U M C. My residence is nine thirty Woody Hill Circle. Slaters, the homeowners. I have no comments other than to answer questions if there's questions.
Questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
Brad and Brenda Slater are siding with this.
Okay.
Right now, while they're building.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor? Would like to speak against? Do I have a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the temporary use authorization at seventy-five sixty-one Lakeside Drive.
Second. Have a motion and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Page H two C three, variance to section ninety point dash one-three-nine. Dylan?
Sir, again, this is an application for variances at thirty-nine hundred Washington Road. Variance is to section ninety dash one thirty-nine, screening ninety dash one. This shows the location of the site at the corner of Washington Road, Bobby Jones Expressway, sorry. This shows the zoning of the parcel. It's currently zoned C two, general commercial. However, the source of the variances, as you can see, basing single-family residential to the southwest of the property. Aerial shot of the site. They now vacant Walgreens there on the site as well. You can see southwest that it shares a lot line with a couple of single-family residences. The plat for the property, site as it exists currently. The existing buffer against those two adjacent residential parcels. This was the originally proposed concept plan that was given to staff for approval. However, we more recently have received an updated one pictured here. So again, with the single-family residential parcels immediately adjacent to this commercial parcel, typically, section ninety dash one thirty-nine offer, requires a buffer between commercial and residential property. There were slightly different, but still buffer requirements in place when the original Walgreens site was developed. However, for some reason, somehow, some way, those decades ago, the buffer was never put in place. So you saw the existing state of the buffer currently as just a privacy fence. The developers originally were looking to some relief from those requirements currently, based on the fact that the existing site has existed, seemingly without major issue. However, now their new application is showing installation of some landscape as well as a new fence there in that location along those shared lot lines with the single-family residential parcels. Staff also has additions speaking to that a little bit as well, and we'll go over all the conditions in a moment. Additional requirements of section ninety, ninety dash one forty-seven, though, are in place because not all commercial uses are viewed equally in Columbia County Code. While this zoning district does allow for retail uses such as the Walgreens, it also allows for gas stations, however, under additional use. Use standard outlined in ninety dash one forty-seven that the applicants are seeking relief from is a hundred-foot separation for any structures affiliated with the operation of a gas station from adjacent single-family residential use. Again, seeking relief from that so that they can develop the site for the proposed gas station. Staff in reviewing this new and updated site plan, generally comfortable with that idea, but has, again, proposed several additional conditions of approval. The first being that all light needs to be shielded and directed away from those adjacent parcels, as well as obviously the installation. Offer seeking to negate the negative effects of lighting on those adjacent residences. And they need to submit a photometric plan showing that there's a zero-foot candle, basically little to no light spillage onto the adjacent parcels through that buffer that is now being proposed. Additionally, we are proposing conditions to eliminate, if we can go back to the site plan, sorry, I should have discussed this while we were here. The six parking spaces all the way to the south of the plan as you're viewing it now, as well as four of the ten parking spaces south of the building, immediately adjacent to the building on the south side, again, as we're viewing the plan now. Again, just to move some of that parking away from that residential lot line and try to shield those from additional negative impact. As you can see also with this site plan, the applicants have proposed moving the dumpster and the generators affiliated with the operation of the gas station further away from those residential lot lines as well. Finally, the, again, the addition that I referenced earlier is to have the planted buffer put in place per the site plan, as well as a new fence installed. The existing fence has been in place for some time and is generally run down, so we're looking to have that buffer kind of revamped, installed again in an attempt to build the adjacent residence negative impact.
Owners Richard Steinert. Do you have a Walgreens company or applicant Tiffany Jackson would like to come forward and speak in favor? Pick your name and address, please, for the record.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Daniel Ben Israel, Real Estate Development Manager for Parker's Kitchen.
Have any questions?
Yes, so I'd like to make a few statements, if I may.
Okay.
First off, I'd like to thank staff for working through this application with us. We've had several conversations and exchanges, trying to, I guess, come to a compromise and an acceptable solution for some of the challenges that this site proposes, poses. So with that, I'll just touch on a few of the items that staff mentioned. We have agreed to installing the fencing, the opaque fence, along with the evergreens to provide a structural and vegetated buffer, buffer, our use from the residential uses. And we've further agreed to pull back some of that parking in the rear. We're definitely going to make sure that there's no light pollution on those residential properties. We'll work with staff, come together, get a photometric plan done, to make sure that we accomplish that. There are some means, different types of lighting fixtures that we can install to make sure. Certainly want to be good neighbors. We're here for the long haul. We're investing a lot into forward to being good community partners, so we want to do our best to make that happen and do achieve that on this site. I do, however, want to point out that the one thing that we're struggling with is the additional recommendation to lose the additional six parking spaces right here. We're going to look into that. In fact, you know, right up until this meeting started, I was on the phone and talking with our engineer, trying to figure out a way that we could move things around and possibly relocate some of that parking around the site to include consideration for building a smaller format store at this location to make it all work. So we have a prototype that's roughly one thousand square feet smaller than this store that we actually built on Washington Road and William Few. And so we would consider reducing the size of the store here also to provide a bit more room for maybe a bit more of a buffer along the rear and also give us an opportunity to relocate some of that parking. So we started off with forty-five spaces, I believe, and after the initial conversations with staff, we dwindled that down forty, forty-two, and then, and then we removed an additional four spaces here. Spaces, again, provide more of a buffer area. So we have no problems doing that. We got rid of the spaces, the three spaces here, and now staff has requested that we eliminate these spaces again. So what we'd like to do, if it's, if you'd be amenable to this, we'd like to certainly take that under advisement, consider losing these spaces or relocating them, reducing the store footprint to assist us with that. But it is, we're trying to strike a balance between capacity and demand here, and we're starting to, when we're losing, you know, thirteen or more spaces, that that balance is a bit disrupted, and we run into issues with congestion. We're, I would say, increasing the circulation around the store and see, well, so we're, we're just, we're just grappling that with that a little bit right now, trying to figure out how to keep that space count up if we can. This road, this corridor has more than fifty thousand vehicle trips a day. And as you can imagine, that's why we want to be there, but as you can imagine, that's a lot of circulation around the site, and we are sensitive to the fact that we need to, you know, to the extent possible, keep those vehicles as far away as we can from the residential use. But it's, it's based on operations, we believe that the usage of those spaces in the rear of the store will see their peak during the morning peak hours and during the day. Nine o'clock at night, those spaces won't be utilized that heavily, or, you know, up until midnight, which, again, will be less of a disruption to residences there at that corner. So I said all of that to say that we certainly appreciate staff working with us, and we're going to adhere to those conditions and recommendations. But with regard to losing those six spaces, perhaps there's a way that we could retain flexibility with how we accomplish buffering between our spaces and the residential uses. For example, we would consider, you know, more densely planting the area that I just Xed out there, again, to provide more of a buffer, noise buffer, et cetera. And then we would consider reducing the store size and relocating some of those spaces to other locations. What we're thinking of is we have also agreed, not agreed, but we've decided to What we're thinking of is, we have also agreed, not agreed, but we've decided to reduce the canopy size. Right now, we have ten fielding positions, ten MPDs, twenty fielding positions. We're going to reduce that and limit it to eight, sixteen fielding positions. We're going to shift the tank pad up to this area, and then that would probably provide us with an opportunity to add additional spaces. So we may be able to gain two more spaces in this area, and if that's the case, then we would ask for consideration to keep maybe four spaces back here, eliminate an additional two spaces, provide more of a buffer from the residences. And I think that would, again, help us strike that very delicate balance between demand and capacity. If there's some way that we can work that into consideration or a vote or condition, we'd be more than happy to make that happen.
So are you saying that you're definitely going to take it down to a five thousand square foot prototype?
We're, well, that's one of the things that we have to look at in order to try to keep that parking count up. So just by way of background, for a store this size, you know, we have an optimal parking layout that includes forty-two spaces. We're now down to, I'm sorry, forty-two spaces. We had forty-five, and so that gave us some room. We came down to thirty-eight, and then with the recommendation to lose an additional six, that would take us all the way down to thirty-two.
Is your parking the same for five thousand square feet as it is six thousand?
No, so that would, that would potentially allow us to stay under the forty-two, but thirty, thirty-two would be really low for us. And so that's why I'm trying to figure out a way to keep us in the thirty-eight range, if we can.
It just seems as though there's, there's a lot going on here. I mean, you've marked a lot of stuff that you wanted to change, and it doesn't seem like it's ready to be approved, honestly, because you've got so many things you want to change. Dylan, have y'all addressed any of the parking spaces? Have y'all talked about them?
No, I mean, we've reviewed the site plans that we've been provided. Haven't reviewed.
And may I, Mr. Chair, through you, may I just add that? So I get that we're, you know, contemplating site plan changes, and that's, again, to make sure that we can come to the meeting, a meeting of the minds with staff to get them comfortable with the real reason that we're here, and that is to get the variance for the one hundred-foot separation from the residential use, which will only get better.
So the variance is just basically about the buffers and everything that...
And the parking. That's correct.
Can that be addressed in the true site plan?
Yeah, that could. Now, Cody, I got a question for you. Where's your sewer line? Where's it going to go on this site, do you think?
It's served, I see on the bottom of this plan with the two dashed lines at the very bottom. That's where it's served now, and after our pre-app meeting, Philly Department and Heather agreed that the better solution is to run out to Karib Drive, down our access drive here. That's where it'll go.
Gotcha. Reason I was asking is because you can't put it on top of that. Or they, they might not let y'all sleep. Move to Karib, then, that's, that takes that out of the question. Now do more in this area.
Yeah, that area should be clear.
Yeah, exactly.
I take it this is a twenty-four-seven operation?
We would like it to be, and I don't know if the zoning allows it.
Yeah, it doesn't allow it.
Another use stipulation, they have not requested a variance to, and ninety dash one forty-seven limits operating hours to not be a twenty-four hour, as currently proposed.
And we're not asking for that at this time, and I'm not even...
I didn't see it.
Going to ask for it.
I think while you guys are contemplating maybe what action you might want to take on this tonight, a couple of things come to mind. One, you can certainly take action as, you know, a recommendation by staff that's already been provided. You could, you know, if the applicant wanted to go back and try and work this new idea and this new concept a little bit more, give us a chance to kind of figure out if that enhances the application. Certainly a postponement would be another option, or you could, you know, just on up and then they could work on it in the background before Board of Commissioners. That might change your, your recommendations when they get it and make that decision, but that's certainly an option, too. So we can certainly take other public comment and figure out if there's common ground, if there's, you know, reason to postpone, and you kind of work this plan before it comes back to you for actual recommendation to the Board of Commissioners.
If it was recommended for approval tonight, is there enough time for you to address these things prior to POC?
Absolutely, yeah. We're going to work diligently to get this cleaned up and ready for presentation at the Board of Commissioners. I'll also add that by reducing the store footprint, it would also give us a bit more room on the rear, along the commercial property that we're abutting, to add more of a buffer as well. So we're just going to probably extend that little green belt that we're building along that entire stretch of the rear property line. That's right, yeah. So, yeah, we're, we would, you know, respectfully ask for your favorable recommendation for approval and allow us an opportunity to work out the details with staff leading up to the Board of Commissioners meeting.
Basically, this is just for the, the buffer, right? Variance?
It's, it's buffer and separation. That's, that's what it is. So you have, again, you have two different parts. You have the ninety dash one thirty-nine, typically you'd have a thirty-foot buffer that's been reduced down to, we'll call it, four to five feet. You also have on ninety dash one forty-seven, you got the hundred-foot separation requirement from the building, and technically, everything else is built there, is vertical. And you also have within that, there's a ten-foot buffer requirement within ninety dash one forty-seven as well, so you're reducing buffers twice, essentially.
And staff recommendation is for the approval?
Approval with conditions?
With conditions.
That's based on the current plan that just came in this afternoon.
It's likely to change by the time it gets to the Board of Commissioners.
Yeah, it, it sounds like if there's more things in flux, like reducing the building size, maybe massaging the parking arrangement, you know, those are, that's information we don't have in front of us right now, so it's, it's hard to say, yeah, we can maybe consider more parking here and less parking there. I think this is probably one of those situations where the recommendation as presented or with the idea that, you know, we'll go back and continue to look at this, or postpone it and then bring it back here with whatever we can work out. I know they want to move forward, so that's a consideration that you can take as well.
And next Commissioners' meeting's two weeks?
Yeah, it'll be the, uh, third, June third.
June third. Y'all think y'all have enough time to...
Oh, I'm sorry, you meant, did you mean Board of Commissioners?
Board of Commissioners.
Yeah, Board of Commissioners is June third, yeah.
So y'all think y'all have enough time to get all this figured out before that?
Absolutely.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience would like to speak in favor? Anyone in the audience would like to speak against? Come, one at a time, come forward, say your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Kimberly Yottz. I live at thirty-nine fourteen Casarosa Avenue, which is the first street that feeds off of Karib. And I'm not, maybe, I may be in the wrong place at the wrong time to ask this question or to make this, these comments, but I'm extremely concerned with Parker's Kitchen, with this access road that comes off here, because that feeds directly into the neighborhood, and it's a pathway for cars to go down to Marcello and get on Bobby Jones, or to turn on Casarosa, and to get off on Washington Road by going up Baldi's, going up Miramar. And so what happens is, everything that will come out of there will feed into our neighborhood because the cars that are coming out are coming out because they don't want to be at the intersection of Washington Road and Bobby Jones, which is hard to get out of. I mean, it's probably one of the more, not probably, it's one of the more congested intersections in Augusta, or in Martinez. And having lived there for forty years, April fifteenth, I'd been in my home forty years on Casarosa, I've watched it go from a dry cleaning, little family dry cleaner that Walgreens came in and bought out, and then Walgreens, and what we've had to deal with, with Walgreens, is all this traffic that comes in, and they think they're at the Indy five hundred. And so we've got children playing and pets playing, but at least we didn't have a lot of commercial traffic. Now we've got gas tankers and eighteen-wheelers and all of their delivery people. When it was Walgreens, they had one truck that came in once a week that was loaded somewhere else, not there, came into Walgreens and they unloaded it, and they always, when they were leaving, they went back out onto Bobby Jones and they were turning with the traffic. So we didn't have that. We do have the eighteen-wheelers that are coming down from, coming down Casa Linda from, off of Washington Road, coming into Sherwin-Williams, and then to get back out on Washington Road, they're coming back down into our neighborhood. And we have all the painters and they're painting with their panel trucks and ladders in the morning, coming up through the neighborhood to get up there, because they just, it's just hard, too hard for them to get into places like that. And then again, in the afternoon, so we've got those who pick up their paint in the morning and those who pick up their paint in the evening. But our neighborhood is, even with that, and those aren't major propositions as far as traffic is concerned at all, but when we get to a Parker's Kitchen, that's a huge, I mean, the Walgreens traffic pales in comparison to what that's going to be. So my, I have two possible, you know, I always make my kids, go bring me a problem, bring me a solution. Well, I have two thoughts on the solution. One is that that road be cut off completely, that little feeder road, the little, you know, one line, or if they want to leave it open to put a, to close off that road, because directly across is another business, so close off that road at the mouth of the, of that street, so they can come in and go out onto Washington Road. But the only thing they can do, if it's, if they can't, is, if they turn, is to come into the neighborhood. And that's just, you know, we've got children and animals and people in and out of driveways, and I don't have to tell you that, you know that. So those are my concerns, and, you know, hopefully my thoughts about how it can be rendered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. May I come forward?
Erin Thompson at one twenty-seven Spring Lakes Drive. Lady said, might be a little bit too little, too late here, but I live in the Spring Lakes subdivision off Columbia Road, and so I'm very familiar with this area. This is a part of town that I drive in daily, and even with the Walgreens not in use, this is an intersection that is so busy. And just off the top of my head, I can think of three gas stations within a quarter of a mile, so I don't see, but it is what it is. So there's a center lane that either, that you use to get onto Old Evans Road, and you also use to get onto Columbia. And that road is already, or that center lane is already so congested with people trying to both use it to go both directions as it is, that sometimes you're sitting waiting for people to either take that left onto Old Evans, or take that left onto Columbia. And I can't even imagine with the Parker's Kitchen sitting right there on that corner, what it's going to look like, what the congestion will be. So I just see it as a real problem for the area for us to live there.
You're talking about coming in off Washington Road into that entrance? Talking about getting into the, I call it suicide lane, but getting in there, because I know what you're talking about, they're turning on Columbia Road, they're turning in Old Evans, and that whole suicide lane back.
That whole suicide, right. You're using that same lane to get onto Columbia and to Old Evans, and sometimes you can't get into it if you're going to Old Evans, because it's already backed up so far. And I think just with the addition of a Parker's Kitchen right there, it's, I can think of an, there's a Amaco, there's a Circle K, there is a, end market, a Spirit. So, you know, right. So it's just, you know, I certainly don't want to stop any growth in the community, but those are just, you know, that's what I'm here to share my opinion, so.
Isn't that thirty-nine oh four, isn't that the Precision Tune store? I get my car worked on there, so I kind of know the road, and I don't dare go back out on Washington Road. I usually go through your neighborhood when I go out.
That's right. That's right.
Because it's so much easier to go and go Bobby Jones and then go home.
It sure is.
And I kind of question, you know, if you've got service trucks coming out of there, how in the world are they going to get on Washington Road going that way?
Right.
And I'm afraid that what they would do, take a left and do what I did, and go down and get on Bobby Jones and go.
Right.
That's, that would be my concern.
That's a concern.
That's the easiest way to do it. I mean, it's just...
They've been doing that for years.
And that's why I do it, because it's so easy, because right at the light, it gets so congested, you can't get out.
Yeah.
To take, you can't take a, you can't take a left, definitely. You can't take a right hardly.
As, as it stands now.
As it stands now, that would be my concern as far as, you know, what are the trucks going to do? And I've, I've, I've had trucks, I had eight trucks on the road, I know what my drivers would do, take a left and go through your, go through your...
Through the subdivision, correct, yep.
So that's, that's a problem that I kind of have with it, too. Plus the fact that, you know, a lot of stuff still needs to be done as far as, we've got the buffer approved by the staff, but I think there's a lot of stuff that needs, I don't know, fixed up, and I don't know if you've got enough time.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I mean, regardless, we're just addressing...
We're just addressing the variance, and that's, that's the thing, so that's, that's just something that I wanted to put on record, just so that somebody...
Right.
Further down the road looks at it.
This is the variance.
As far as y'all would, that's not an option as far as doing away with that back road. I know we're talking about variances here, but as far as that back road that cuts down into Rob, you know what I'm saying? I mean, is it definitely, you got to have that back road that dumps into that subdivision?
Part of that property.
Yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if I may. Yeah, I mean, the site was designed with that rear access, you know, it's there, it's existing, and so we're planning to, to keep it there. I guess it's a, it's a mixed blessing, because we do recognize that individuals leaving our store will use that. I'm not going to stand here and say, oh, no one's going to go that way. We, we all know that it's going to happen. But the, I guess, the, the flip side of that is that it's a great access for the residents of that neighborhood to our store, and...
Well, I, I understand. I understand.
I don't think you have a customer.
Your objection, I, I won't, I won't bark up that tree.
I'm speaking for the people that I talk to.
So, so I guess in short, you know, we'd like to keep it there, you know, to, I guess, address some of the concerns. We would consider putting up a height restriction bar. Look, no trucks can go that way, none of our delivery trucks can go that way. That way, we keep all the truck traffic on the main corridors and out of the neighborhoods. I mean, we will have vehicular traffic using that, that access and egress point, but we would, I guess, we would like to keep it there. But we can consider doing things to prohibit or restrict truck traffic.
And the rea, the reason I brought it up is I, I just know that that's probably going to be a problem. I know we're basically discussing the, the buffers and the separation requirements here, but I just want to put that on record, just so, it's through my experience.
You actually could add a condition, they have to have like a height bar or something. Like, you don't have to limit it to only what we're talking about tonight. Like, y'all could do that. Keep that in mind. If they're offering before the condition, then they, they have to do that.
They have to, say that again?
So if, if they're saying, we're, we're willing to do a, you know, a height bar, or however you want to call it, a height restriction bar on Karib.
That height be like nine foot six?
I'm sorry?
What is that height bar?
Basically on that road?
Yeah, I would, whatever, I mean, I think we did one where, forget the height, but it might have been ten or twelve feet, whatever, whatever height it needs to be, make sure that no trucks go that way. That's where we'll set it, yep.
I guess the question that becomes that height is kind of... I guess the question that becomes that height is kind of critical because panel trucks are a certain height, you know, my pickup truck is a different height. We're trying to prevent one versus the other, realistically.
We don't need another olive road here in Columbia County. That's, that's, that's my concern, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions?
No.
Move on.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to postpone file VA 250502. Uh, variance removed buffer and separation requirements from proposed gas station at 3900 Washington Road to the June 5th meeting.
Second. I have a motion duly seconded, all is in favor of postponement. Motion carries. Have any legal matters tonight?
Yep.
Have any staff or commissioner comments to make this time this evening?
Can we get some WD-40 for that door before next meeting?
What's that?
Can we get some WD-40 for that door right after next meeting?
WD-40 for that door. Let's put that down.
We're getting a new building.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to be adjourned.
Second.
Motion for second, all is in favor. We're adjourned.